Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Please stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the April fifteenth meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Favor, aye.
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 Legal issues?
None other than I've got a stack of claims that have been previously recommended by Veritas, your project manager, and approved by Commissioner Wolf relating to the jail project. You can ratify them all at once. I'll just read you what they're for. The first one is relating to changing the ceiling heights throughout the facility. There was no cost associated with that. The second is for thirty-one thousand, five hundred and two dollars for detention hardware. The third is two hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents for real-time detention LLC and Norix for detention furniture. Next is to Pauli Jail Building Company, also for detention furniture, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. The next is for kitchen appliances, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Next is ninety-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. That is relating to the dispatch area and some changes there. And seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for A2M for redesigning some of the dispatch center. And the last is also for refrigeration for the evidence in the evidence room, evidence refrigerator, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. And one more, sorry. Central restaurant products, five thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty cents relating to stainless steel work table package. Request your ratification of all of those claims.
Move to ratify. Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That's all I have for legal issues.
Very good. Next on the agenda is the 2025 NDOT 5311 grant.
Good morning, Anita Bowen, Boone County Senior Services, Boone Area Transit System. I'm here today to ask your approval for Boone County Senior Services to submit the 2025 operating grant for public transit. That is a partnership that we've had with the county to do transportation for all of our citizens since 2006, and it's been an honor to do that. We are looking at also submitting a grant in this funding period for capital to minivans. So the operating grant is being submitted as a proposed amount of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars for 2025. The capital grant would be for seventy-one thousand dollars per minivan. I want to remind you that the operating grant is a fifty-fifty match. So NDOT 5311 provides fifty percent of that eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, or whatever is approved by them upon review. And then the capital program, which is NDOT 5339, is an eighty-twenty match. So they provide eighty percent. So for those seventy-one thousand dollar per minivan, it would be a match of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. And we, the Boone County Senior Services, Boone Area Transit System, would come up with fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars per van. Those are replacement minivans. And we currently have about eighteen vans in service for the county. Submitted all the documents to Bob for his review. I didn't see anything that was abnormal or out of order in comparison to what we normally do. Be happy to answer any questions and just would like to say thank you for your partnership. And we're looking to continue to improve and transport more people each year. And I just need your approval to submit this grant.
As part of this, there is an authorizing resolution, which I'll read briefly. That says, "Resolution authorizing filing of CY 2025 application for a grant under Section 5311, 5339 of the Federal Transit Act as amended. Whereas the U.S. Department of Transportation is authorized to make grants to states through the Federal Transit Administration to support capital operating and feasibility study assistant projects for non-urbanized public transportation systems. The Office of Transit, Indiana Department of Transportation, has been designated by the governor to make Section 5311, 5339 grants for public transportation projects. In the contract for financial assistance, will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including the provision by it of the local share of project costs. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Boone County Commissioners, Donald Lawson. President, on behalf of the Boone County Commissioners, is authorized to make the necessary certifications and assurances and be empowered to enter into the agreement with NDOT for the provision of rural public transportation services within Boone County. Two, that the Boone County Commissioners has designated the following nonprofit organization to coordinate, provide rural public transportation services within our county, that being Boone County Senior Services, Inc., or the Boone Area Transit System. That the Boone County Senior Services, Inc., Boone Area Transit System, is authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the Boone County Commissioners with NDOT to aid in the financing of transit assistant projects pursuant to Section 5311 of the Federal Transit Act as amended. For the Boone County Senior Services, Boone Area Transit System, is authorized to furnish such additional information as NDOT may require in connection with the application. And lastly, that the Boone County Senior Services, Boone Area Transit System, is authorized to execute grant contract agreements on behalf of the Boone County Commissioners. Again, that is authorizing Resolution 2024 dash zero three. I respectfully request your approval.
Questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Quick and easy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Southern Health Partners.
Good morning, Mike Beer, Chief Deputy of Sheriff's Office. We wanted to come, we met with our medical providers last week, and we want to amend a contract that we have with the Commissioners with our medical staff or our medical contractor. What they've located and found is that we weren't utilizing all of our mental health hours. We're not decreasing or losing any, but they found that what we contracted for originally, we're not utilizing, and they wanted to save us some money in the contract. So to the tune of about thirty-three thousand dollars a year. In addition, what we're looking at is adding and trying to get all of our medical records, computerized and electronic medical records. So in looking at that, at that cost, that that was going to offset or maybe possibly add on to with this savings, we now wanted to come back and say that for the calendar year, we'll be saving it to ten thousand dollars over the contract with this amended request or this amended contract that we're doing. All of the changes for the contracted amount fit into our 2024 budget. So there's no anything other than it's a ten thousand dollar savings. We just wanted to let you know. Okay? And then lastly, before I forgot, Max brought it up to my attention. I can't remember if we came and asked for permission or requested to utilize the courthouse on May the fifteenth after hours. That's our annual law enforcement officer down, Police Week. I can't remember if we came before we asked for permission, we asked for permission to use the courthouse that evening.
I don't remember either, but it'll be taken care of right now. It's not a problem.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ditchwich quote, Max.
Morning. I have a quote from Ditchwich for a hydro vac trailer for the highway apartment. It is a budgeted item that we were purchasing through Sourcewell. Total volume is one forty-seven, one twenty-five, one thirty cents. And for your guys' approval.
Any questions?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, Steve Alkins, consultant, services agreement.
Yes, so with the resignation of Mr. Alkins and his relocation back to Colorado, we didn't want to let any grass grow under our feet and keep the Area Plan Commission Office still functioning, able to service customers. So he has agreed to offer his planning services remotely for a short period of time. I believe he conducted TAC meetings, one or two TAC meetings last week, and did some remote work for the Plan Commission. His agreement calls for him to be paid a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for technical assistance, and then each staff report generated would be for two hundred and fifty dollars. And he's supplying all of his own computer and other supplies that he needs during the short period of time that he will be doing that. So this is on your standard independent contractor agreement form, so I would request your approval.
Questions? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve. Just to note that at the current time, we'll be using his salary line to cover the cost of these consulting fees until such time that it doesn't cover it, so.
Are you going to re-approve that to the consulting line?
Whatever you want us to do.
I'll second the motion, if I didn't already.
Any, any further discussion? Are you in, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next on our list, another consulting service amendment, agreement, not amendment, sorry.
Yes, this is from... This is a independent contractor's agreement with Co-Crafters. This is a independently owned company by Deborah Lazier, who is an AICP planner. She has agreed to serve as the interim executive director for the Area Plan Commission. One of the big advantages, well, there's several with contracting with Deb. First of all, she used to work in the planning office here in Boone County. So she, she actually drafted our existing zoning ordinance. So she's very familiar with it. She's previously worked in Whitestown and currently also is a planner for Jamestown, contracted planner, and a few other communities. So she knows Boone County extremely well. And the other big advantage is that she's agreed to physically be present in the office a day or two a week. In fact, she's, I believe, going to be up here this afternoon to meet with Ashley and Kirby, kind of work out the details of what day she'll be in the office. And that way, we've got somebody in there that can meet with applicants and answer questions. I've reviewed the agreement. It's a standard form agreement. And much like Stevens', it is for a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but respectfully request your approval.
Questions?
Just for clarity's sake on this. So Steven did agree to help us out for a short period of time, but he does have another job that he's, he's already taken and started. So this transition will be relatively quick, where Steven will be stepping away from this contract, and Deb will be taking over. I can't say enough good things about Deb. She's worked, like Bob said, in Jamestown for years, and I've worked with her down there. And she has a vast knowledge of how Boone County zoning ordinances are written. So I think I'm pretty excited for this opportunity to work with her until we find somebody to replace our director. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Do you want two separate lines or just one?
Just one line.
Just one consulting line? Okay. We'll get paperwork however you want it, so.
All right, moving on. Taylor Farms lease amendment.
Yeah, this is an agreement with Tom Taylor that he's, he's the one that farms our open ground out at the jail. We originally entered into a lease with him back in 2015, and he's been farming it ever since. It's a three-year lease that's been renewed January first of eighteen, twenty-one, and then January first of this year. With the improvements that we've made out at the jail, the amount of farmable or tillable acreage has decreased. It was originally thirty-nine acres. So we're going to be reducing that to thirty-four acres by agreement of the Taylors. So this is just an amendment to the farm lease stating that the number of acres of tillable real estate as defined in the lease shall be reduced to thirty-four acres. And all other terms of the lease are reaffirmed and in full force in effect.
Questions?
Can we do that at the next meeting before you and I compete with Tom beforehand?
Sure.
I've got a question for him that I want to run by before we sign this.
Yeah, there's no urgency with it.
Okay. Is that all right with you guys?
Yep.
That's fine. So I would move to table that to the next meeting.
Got it. Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Parr, you have a couple things for us here. NDOT local roads and bridges matching grant agreement.
Matching grant agreement that's on the agenda, my understanding, is a ratification of an agreement that was likely executed via DocuSign for the projects we were recently awarded on Bridges seventeen and nineteen. They're matching the construction amount, fifty percent. And the agreement was sent, my understanding is, to Mr. Lawson for execution, just via DocuSign. I think it just needs ratification.
Correct. Move to ratify. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next on yours is the LPA consulting contract.
Yeah, this is for the Roundabout Project four hundred east, one hundred south, that was originally awarded funding in 2020. The selection of the consultant for this project using federal funds was done shortly thereafter. But we are not able to enter into the right-of-way services agreement until we get to this stage of the project, where their next step would be doing appraisals and work on the right-of-way acquisition needed for the project. So this agreement is on the NDOT boilerplate language for county and A&amp;F Consulting to get, or A&amp;F Engineering to be into an agreement for them to do the services. The next step would be the reimbursement agreement with NDOT, where we would get eighty percent, or in this case, ninety percent of our funds reimbursed because it's a safety project. So this agreement is for us to work with A&amp;F Consulting. The total not to exceed is fifty-four thousand dollars. That's all of the appraisals, the buying, the review appraisals that are required when federal funds are used for a project.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
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 All right, moving on to old business. Mr. Nielsen, report for an update on the jail.
Good morning, Mike Nielsen, project manager. Just a few quick updates. We are, conducted our sixty-fifth meeting last week, the owner-operator-architect-contractor meeting. We're twenty days, unfortunately, just twenty days, without a recordable safety incident. We're still working on the deep structures. I'll talk about that here in a second. And from a safety standpoint, Hagerman's going to start making sure that they're stressing the hydration protocols since summer's coming along. We have cranes on site all last week, and we'll have partial cranes on site this week as well. Just a few issues that keeps haunting us is this de-watering issue, trying to get these deep structures to the point where we can get the concrete set and the structures put on top of that concrete. It has been, needless to say, it's been pretty tough trying to get that done. Last week, we contracted C&amp;J Well Company to come out and drill three wells, actually forty to fifty feet deep, trying to get below that surface water so we can start pumping it out of there from the twelve-inch wells now. We're hoping by the end of this week, we'll know whether that is going to work. Working on the design of the air intake between the old building and the new building. We finally got that resolved. We're not going to have to penetrate the old roof. We'll be able to penetrate the new roof without having to access any of the old jail. The final, just a few milestones that we accomplished this week is the final large RTU. If you haven't been out there, the very big HVAC unit right in front there was completed on Unit B. It actually weighed about thirty-three thousand pounds, so that was quite the day when that went up. Unit A, the IT server room's being built out right now. Wood blocking's done, the drywall's installed. We're working on the mechanical room for the electrical right next to that to try to get that area sped up so we can start getting the IT in there. Kitchen area, the final paint is being completed. We'll continue to work with the Sheriff's Office coordinating to make sure that we get timing and schedule completed with them so they know when they can start operations in the infirmary as well as the kitchen. Unit B, which is the probation community corrections, the upper level drywall should be installed this week. We started it last week. It's looking really good. And we've reviewed both the boulder block and the masonry wall mockups as well. Just a few things to accomplish. Continue to work on the deep structures until those are set. Hopefully, again, that'll be this week. Unit E steel to finish this week. If you haven't looked, the crane's on the north side of the old jail. On Unit E, we're actually putting in steel there. Unit B, we actually started on the priming and painting in the basement. So you're going to start seeing a lot of the finished areas happening there. Juvenile operation, which I haven't mentioned a whole lot during the project, but we're actually starting to put the veneer, in the veneer on the front of the building as well, which is the lock and the other things that actually make the building look well. It looks really good. Framing will be continuing on Unit C, which is a corner's building as well. Just a couple of the other projects, Timecock Plus, we're still holding, kind of waiting for Guts in the auditor's office. There were some questions on State Board of Accounts and how we're doing the standards with overtime and those types of things. We're working through those with the auditor's office. We want to make sure that she approves that as well as the State Board of Accounts. And then they're still working on trying to get that particular, that particular issue resolved. As far as NeoGov, we're continuing to work on NeoGov, which is the HR software. It's completed. Perform, which is the performance development reviews. We're working with the county highway. We've met with Nick and his folks, as well as the prosecutor's office, to try to bring that online. That one's complete. Right now, we're working on the core HR models. So that's just kind of, we'll continue to work on that. That's just an update on where we're at with projects. Any questions? Thank you.
Good, thank you. Moving on to staff reports. Not be anything from Area Plan. Max, do you have any, anything? Doc, do you have anything for us?
Yeah.
Human Resources is not here. Guts, Eddie? And then we'll go back to Highway. Nick?
I just have one item for consideration today, the standard drawing updates, provided in paper copy. I believe our pet engineer sent in to electronic copy last week. It's a rather thick packet, but there's really mainly four standard drawings that we want to update just from going through some of our projects, finding some items that needed to be reworded, changed a little bit of the description on some patchy detail. We use these for our paving projects, bridge projects. And our sign project also revealed some, some items that we needed to update from the way we have our signs made to be more descriptive for contractors that are getting shop drawings done. So if there's any questions on any of those, more than happy to hear about them. We did create two new standards that didn't previously exist for concrete box footing that, that didn't exist before. We're putting in a four-sided box. We did a lot of those projects, minimizing the engineering. That's mainly done with shop drawings, and we could provide some guidance on what we're looking for on how to place those, place the footings that's going to go down before the four-sided concrete box. It would question all these small structures. That standard drawing didn't exist previously. And also, where gravel road meets a bridge with a pavement detail, typically they're using our rural paved road sections where the pavement ends abruptly and the gravel roads meet it. So we found that we constantly have potholes where those meet the paved section and gravel road section. And we tried it on a couple of bridges where we stepped to the pavement section, extended the base, and then shortened up the intermediate and then the surface so it doesn't meet at a straight line going down. So we've seen success with that. So we created a standard drawing and wanted to get these approved so we can get them posted on the website for contractors to be able to see it.
A question for Mr. Parr and you. Do we need to sign all three of these copies or just one?
I just need one signed copy. I provided a signature page down there. Provided that so you can see the changes. I didn't want to send you sixty-page documents every view at all. Wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to see the paper copy there a little bit.
Just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to do all three of them.
I just need one copy of it signed, and that's what we'll be able to put on the website.
Questions? Tim, do you have any comments?
I mean, it seemed to make sense. At some point, I think I would like to sit down and go through the whole thing in a little more detail, which I'm sure you would expect, but with that, I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And these are open to constantly being tweaked. We created them, I think it's 2018 or 19. We tweaked them again as we continued to see the need. Plan to create some standard drawings for utility installations as well. That way the utilities will have it in front of them when it does get posted on the website. It's been out there for everyone to be able to review.
Okay. Very good.
That was the only item for approval that I had. All the other notes I put on the report were just updates on some projects.
Good, thank you. Elected officials?
I do have a couple of comments.
Doc? Before we go on.
I go out there, come on. So just a couple of things I wanted to say. I'm glad Stacy Septon's here today because I owe you an apology. There was some comments I made about, publicly about threats that were made to individuals. I did not realize at that time that you had been threatened as well, and I wanted to apologize to you about that. It's just not acceptable. And I'll reiterate, our, our county's better than this, and I'm, I'm sorry that you had to go through that. Secondly, there's been some, some of the things that we approved this morning from the Veritas group kind of speak to our communication center out at the jail. And there's been some pretty ugly and, and absolutely fabricated rumors going around the last few weeks that we forgot and left the communication center out of our discussion. That is absolutely not what we did. We improved, we're improving our communication center. That will take us twelve, fifteen, eighteen years into the future. But we know at the end of that time, we are going to need to expand that system even farther. And best practices across this country have told us that we have, we should take that communication center out to a separate building. That's the plan going into the future. That's what we planned for in the original drawings. The change that we're making here actually, we believe, makes the communication center even better today than what it will, what it was in the original plan for the jail. So that was, that was just some, some further thought that was done after the project was started. And I want to thank Sheriff's Department for participating in that, helping us with that process. So.
If I can add to that, just to be able to clarify anything. The original plans that were, came to us, we looked at... and I think in talking with Mike, is that it was cost-effective to make the change that we did to get us another 10 years down the road, but the Sheriff's Department would again, fully support it, and again, your statements there that, you know, 10, 15 years from now, we're going to need something better, you know, something bigger, because, you know, that's one of the other things, we've been working with the council, and because for years, the county has been taking the brunt of improving everything in communications when Whitestown, Zionsville, Lebanon are all growing leaps and bounds, which is putting a lot of pressure on our communications center, which is the reason why we're needing this. So there's a lot of discussion being done, and it's great conversation, but the Sheriff's Department again, fully supports what you said, Jeff, and we wholeheartedly agree. 15 years down the road, yeah, we'll have to look at something, but it was included in this plan.
Thank you. All right. Once again, any other elected officials or comments? If not, public comment, anyone? Yes, sir.
My name's Cory Brown, I live at AC 45 South Lebanon, East in Zionsville, came in here before about the culvert issue of my property, seeing if you guys came to any resolution to it. I mean, Nick Par just came up here and asked you for approval on standard drawings. The issue with my culvert is nowhere near, it comes nowhere near what the standard drawing says. We got the two people to the south of me to agree to replace their pipes, their culvert pipes, with the whole idea that you could get everything to the standard drawings, or at least, you know, the right elevation. The problem is that every time you pull in the driveway, it's going to push the stone off the pipe, there's only like four inches at the most. I just don't understand, what's the point of standard drawings if you're not going to follow them, you know? And then we got a ditch to the north of me that flows south, that dead ends into the driveway that's north of my driveway, and then it just, there's not a ditch, and they're trying to tell me that there is a ditch, but how can it, if it flows south, to the north of the driveway is deeper than what the south is? So if you're pulling, you know, this is all simple, they should be aware of this, I mean, if you got a ditch to the north of you that flows south, and yet it comes to the driveway to the north of you, and it's deeper there than it is to the south of that same driveway, it's, you know, they want to argue with me and tell me it hasn't been filled in, there's no, they want to look at due earth, but at some point in the last 10 years, 12 years, the guy filled his ditch in, caused all the water to flow into my front yard now, and nobody wants to reply to any of my questions about it. They tried to blame me for putting two buckets of dirt in the ditch, which, you know, Nick Par's own words, the property to the north of me is a foot higher than my property, so those two buckets of dirt are still sitting there, they're about 10 feet from the ditch now, but it's not enough to have done anything, and it just comes down to, you know, you guys, it's almost incompetence, you come in, you told me, they told me that it had to be put into their standards. I filed for permit and offered to do the whole project myself, from two driveways to the south of me, my driveway and my other driveway, and it got no reply, and then they just said they were going to do it, and then they come out and they just, they just put the pipe on top of the ground, they said they're going to reshape and reestablish the ditch from north of my property to the south to the cuts legal drain, and this isn't a project where there wasn't, there wasn't the ability to put it into the standards, they just chose not to do it. There's the cuts legal drain where the elevation's like four or five feet deeper than it outlets into, I just don't understand, what's the point of the, the standard drawings if you're not going to, you know, you're not going to go by them, you're just going to, you know, put the pipe on top of the ground and call it good, it looks good from their house, you know? It's not going to matter if I pave it and it cracks within a year because it's just what's going to happen. So, you know, I've come here four or five times now, I know Tim Byers been to my house twice, nobody wants to reply, I don't want to have to get a lawyer put in.
If you, I have been out there, I've met with Nick, lots of communication, I've been through everything, if you want to speak with us after the meeting, I mean, obviously, I don't think we're going to resolve it right here, but if you want to speak with us after the meeting, I'm sure, I don't know if Nick's available after the meeting or not, but let's discuss it and get it resolved.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to documents.
I have a large batch of claims, I just got questions behind you.
Move to approve, S. Middle.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And for mail, not a lot, a couple notifications from I.D.M., and two notices for a claim for an accident that occurred in Lebanon, so I've already taken care of those and notified our insurer, and that's all I have.
Anything else?
Move to Jerry.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here this morning.